Councilmember Tom LaBange is unable to be here tonight, but we have the other two candidates with us. Mr. Box, Mr. O'Grady, we're grateful that you are here with us tonight. My name is Ryan Bell. I'm the pastor of the Hollywood Adventist Church where you are right now. My congregation and I have been very involved in the community for the past many years, six of which I've been privileged to be a part of this congregation. And in the last five years, we've been very involved in the community through our work with L.A. Voice. And it's also with our partnership with L.A. Voice that we are bringing this campaign forum to you today. I was thinking, as I was preparing for this, that this very night, people all over the world are struggling and even risking their lives for democracy. The former Speaker of the House, Tip O'Neill, said that "all politics is local." And nowhere, I think, is this more true than in the local city council campaign where the very decisions that we make affect our lives in the most tangible way, perhaps. And essential to the success of our democracy and its ability to serve all the people is our willingness, each one of us, to participate, to engage in civil public discourse. So, thank you for coming tonight, for being a part of what makes our society great. We don't have to risk our lives to be here, and that's a good thing for us. But I think it's important for us to not take our democracy for granted as well. Just a few housekeeping items. This forum is going to last approximately 90 minutes. Each candidate will make an opening statement, after which I'll moderate a time of questions and responses from the candidates. Each candidate will have two and a half minutes to respond to the question. And at the close, the candidate will have a chance to make a closing statement as well. No questions will be taken from the floor tonight, but a number of you did submit questions through our email online, and we were able to incorporate those into the questions that we'll be asking tonight. So, we're grateful to you for sending your questions in in that way. One of the values that our congregation holds dear is listening to one another and respectful dialogue. And so, to that end, we, of course, ask everyone to be respectful, both of our candidates tonight and as well as the incumbent council member. Even when you disagree with something, I think we can agree that it's important to be respectful. There's also a couple of ushers in the back to help you if you need to find your way to something that you don't know how to find. So, please ask someone who looks like they know what they're doing. And with that, I'd also, I'd like to invite Carolyn from the council member's office to also make a brief comment.
Thank you, Pastor Bell, for allowing me to speak very briefly on behalf of the council member who is really sorry he couldn't be here tonight. He had a conflict on his schedule from the outset, from when this event was scheduled, and it was never, he was never able to change it. And he thanks you, first of all, for organizing this and looks forward to your garden dedication on the weekend. And you've been such a great leader in the Hollywood community, and we're so happy that you're here. I wanted to introduce my colleague, Stacy Marple, who is the field director for the council member and another volunteer on this campaign, as am I. And Sharon Shapiro, who is another volunteer tonight. Anyway, I just have to put in a plug for Tom, whom I met 20 years ago. I was working as a reporter and called City Hall and said, "I need someone to show me around, tell me what's going on in this part of the city." And Tom came out, drove me all around, and told me, it was my first drive around with Tom LaBange. Little did I know that I would spend years of my life doing this later, but he knew every house, every store, told me all about the evolution of Koreatown and what was going on in Hollywood and all different stories of his district. And, you know, he knows this district better than anyone else. He knows the city of Los Angeles better than anybody else. And he works 24/7 to do the best job he can as a council member. So, thank you again for allowing me to speak. And, oh, I have, these are maps for the Oscar street closures that I put outside for anybody who is, might be driving through the area on Sunday. And Tom recommended that there are two other forums. He recommends the one on the first because he thinks that there'll be easier traffic, easier parking possibilities. So, I have the flyer for that as well. Thank you.
Mr. Box.
My name's Stephen Box. I am running for city council, representing District Four, a place I'm proud to call home. And in fact, I live right outside the front door.
Right outside?
And I've lived there for almost 14 years. It's where I met my lovely wife. And it's where I kind of got involved in this community, and it's a journey that I haven't looked back on. I was born in Australia to two Nazarene pastors. So, when Ryan moved to town, I kind of knew what he was going through. He's also a PK. And when he came to town, the one thing I knew from the way I was raised is the value of good welcome. And so, NC and I said, "Welcome to the neighborhood," and we cleaned the parking lot as our little gift. That's right. But I want to thank you for your welcome tonight. And so, we're very honored to be here and honored to have you all here this evening. When I moved back to L.A., I was to work in the entertainment industry, and so I was pretty happy producing films, commercials, and music videos. And along the way, NC and I produced a film last year, shot here in East Hollywood. And we established a sustainability standard for the entertainment industry in the process of doing it, which was, of course, the subject of a documentary film, Real Sustainable. Some of you folks may know me as the budget advocate. And in fact, some of the folks on the campaign are folks who are part of Budget L.A., which was our effort to work with the city to balance the city's budget. And I was there every year last year, fighting for the departments that I think are essential to our great city mandate, like the Department of Disability, Cultural Affairs, Parks, Recreation, Human Relations. And some of you may know me as a transportation advocate. In fact, it was one of the first things that brought us to Hollywood United, was asking, "How can we cross that busy street? And why is there an issue with traffic on Franklin?" And along the way, I've become a transportation funding expert with the State of California. I work on safer routes of school money. But in all of these opportunities could be of service, whether it's just cleaning our streets, like when the empty lot across the street became an eyesore, whether it's working to deliver safe streets that are crossable. At every turn, what I've encountered is a city in crisis. So, we have a crisis with a budget. We have a crisis with collapsing infrastructure. We have a crisis with traffic congestion. We have a crisis with development run amok. And we're in a city that I would consider to be in the midst of a crisis of leadership, which is what brings us here tonight. And that's why I'm running for city council, because, you know, you're going to hear people say they're angry, and they're fed up, and they're not going to take it anymore. And you're going to hear people say, "Please, we just need some more time to work on this." And I just stand before you as a guy that says, "Together, I think we can create a great city, and I'd like to be your partner in greatness, and I'd like to move L.A. forward." So, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for joining us this evening, and I appreciate it.
Is this on? Yes?
Hi, everybody. Thank you for having us here. Thank you, Stephen. My name is Tommaso O'Grady. Let me tell you a little bit about myself. I was born and reared in the west of Arlington. Before moving to Los Angeles, my wife, Justine, and I restored old brownstones in Hoboken, New Jersey. We worked hard. We lived frugally. We did our homework, and we did pretty well. America has been good to me and my family. America has worked for me. I came to the United States with $80 in my pocket. I started off life as a carpenter, and we just finished our dream home in the hills of Los Feliz. Now, I'm running for Los Angeles City Council. That's pretty amazing. My story, though, I don't think is no longer possible in this country, and I would say it's particularly impossible in this city. Whether you're trying to open a small business, get a decent public education, now even basic library service, this city has failed all but a few of us. L.A. is the homeless capital of the United States. And yet, we pay our city council people the highest salary in the United States. Something has run amok in this city. We've lost our way. That's why I'm running for city council, not to be a politician, as I am a terrible politician, but to be a public servant. I'm remembering my lines here. I'm doing the best I can, so I'm sorry. Leadership is not about cheerleading, or pretending to fill a pothole, or showing off for photo ops. Leadership is about courage. It's about admitting when you're wrong. It's about talking straight. It's about bringing people together and then getting out of the way. It's not about hugging the limelight. For me, it's about leading by example. It's about walking the walk. And above all, it's about action, not words. I was recently described in a blog as a naive idealist. They're right. I'm naive. I was so naive that I thought if we put in an organic garden at King Middle School two years ago, that it might, it just might act as some kind of catalyst for that school. Thomas Jarred King Middle School was the second most improved middle school in all of Los Angeles last year. Justine and I, my wife, sitting right here, we were so naive that 10 years ago, we said, "If we lived frugally for 10 years, we could pay off our mortgage." We are mortgage-free today. So, I would submit to you that this city could do as a few more naive people in City Hall. My name is Tommaso O'Grady, and I'm respectfully asking for your vote. Thank you.
We'll begin with the questions and responses. We'll start over on this side with Mr. Box. And the first question is, "How do you feel about U.S. foreign policy in the Middle East?" Obviously, it's a wrong campaign. I'm sorry. Maybe it's not. I am curious about that one. We'll talk about that. Council District Four boasts one of the largest municipal parks, the largest municipal park in the country, Griffith Park. But in other communities in City Four and Los Angeles as a whole, are a concrete jungle where children don't have any place to play. There are safe environments for them to just be with their families. So, if elected, how would you make parks more accessible to the communities that lack them?
Well, I'd treat them as a priority, and I believe that the elements of a great city are public safety, public works, public health, and public education, and that they're connected. And I believe that parks are an integral element of public safety, that it's an essential element of our public works commitment to a great city, that it absolutely is the essence of a healthy community, your ability to walk across the street, sit outside with some air that's breathable. And I do believe that children do better when they can have access to a park, when they feel safe moving outside. I believe it's an integral element. And in fact, there's a campaign down the street to turn the empty lot at Garfield Place in Hollywood Boulevard into a park, not just a park, but a memorial to Armenian genocide. And these, this is an empty lot. It's been empty since we've been here. And in fact, we don't have any space around here to gather. And it's absolutely unacceptable, because the funds that come to the city, whether it's quinbi fees from developers, whether it's money because it's close to a station, in other words, there are resources that are actually mismanaged, and it's your money that's being mismanaged. And there are, there are large visions, for example, the Hollywood Cap Park has a representative here, someone that wants to turn the entire 101 freeway, well, the entire 101 freeway, that would be a nice vision, huh? The 101, to put a cap over the 101 freeway and actually create a zipper that connects two communities. But there's also a very small piece of property right around the corner, the Caltrans property. When you pulled the aloe vera plants from, you know, when we redid the landscaping, NC and I hauled all those aloe veras over there and planted them on Caltrans property, there's little examples of how we take little bits of space. And we have some friends here that were part of Parking Day L.A. when we actually took parking spaces and turned them into parks. That's the kind of dialogue we're having and the kind of uphill battle we have on our hands. But I assure you that parks are an absolute priority. We have a committee, Parks, Parks, Health, and Aging, that's responsible, not just for the largest urban wilderness park in the United States, America, Griffith Park, but also that little piece of property around the corner, the little empty lot down the street, and lots of other opportunities to make our neighborhoods healthier, safer, and more enjoyable. So, it's an absolute commitment.
So, let me just compliment the Hollywood Freeway Park. That is a fantastic project, and if I understand it correctly, it's about $200 million. And let me compliment that organization and the way that that was planned, the way the community was included. I think that is one of the few examples, if you ask me, how to design, how to, how to plan a project, how to bring people together. I cannot think of one thing to criticize about that process. And at $200 million, that is a fantastic deal to build a park. When you, to build a park over the freeway, when you compare to the Boston Big D, which cost, I don't know how many, how many billions, and it's the same, it would be the same effect, which is joining those two neighborhoods. I've done this a few times already, Pocket Parks. I wrote the MOU for LUSD for a new community garden at Mitchell-Trenan, which we are now working on presently. My friend, Ben Arno, designed it. And in my proposal, in my platform, is to have LUSD, the library, and the Parks Department work in concert. These are, these are all agencies that are broke, and so, we need to have economies of scale. LUSD can open up its, its real estate during the summer, and the libraries ought to get into the business of after-school programs. There are other cities do this already. Pasadena does it, and we ought to be doing it here in L.A. And with regard to, I agree with Stephen, Pocket Parks, this is the perfect time for the city of Los Angeles to snap up really inexpensive real estate so as to turn them into small Pocket Parks. It is the perfect time. Real estate is down by almost 30%. Vacant lots are down so much more. And yeah, parks, with regard to the Griffith Park thing, we need to build small, tiny parks closer to where the people are, so the people don't have to drive all the way up to Griffith Park. And we ought to leave Griffith, Griffith Park alone for what it's meant to be. Does that mean over or a warning?
Warning.
A warning.
Thirty-second warning.
Okay. So, did I answer the question properly? Did I? Is that satisfactory? Yes. Thank you.
We're going to begin with you on question two. Other cities and neighborhoods have implemented strategies that allow them to be pedestrian-friendly. Hollywood, in comparison, is a much more visited and well-known city, and yet, has a long way to go to be truly walkable as a community. How would you propose addressing the issues of transportation, parking, and walkability as pertains to the community of Hollywood?
Okay. Again, I'm more into action rather than, than words. I'm less into vague responses to questions and more about what we can do tomorrow. I joined the Greater Griffith Rock Neighborhood Council two, almost three years ago, I suppose, now. And right after that, we formed a new Green Committee. And our focus was on finding all the missing trees on all the streets so that we can have a real tree canopy. And to date, Farm Fuels, the organization that I founded, has managed to get 300 trees into the ground in all of those streets that are missing. So, a tree canopy in this city is critical in order for people to walk and shade. The mayor of Los Angeles, the incumbent, many, many press conferences about the Million Tree Program, constantly talking about it, yet the trees are not getting into the ground. So, tree canopy, number one, obviously. And that's about it, I suppose. We like to walk downhill, but frankly, at some times of the year, it's impossible because it's, well, it's roasting outside. So, greening spaces, tree canopy would make it easier for more people to walk. So, thank you.
And to you, sir.
Transportation, parking, and walkability in Hollywood. NC and I went to Sacramento last year in support of AB 766, which was the Safe Streets Bill. It would give local communities control over traffic control and the establishment of speed limits. Last year, I went to City Hall on a regular basis, imposing each and every speed limit increase. It made it through the Transportation Commission, the Transportation Committee, and City Council. And of course, the incumbent, who's on the Transportation Committee, is the vice chair. Each and every one of them, he voted in favor of. Our streets aren't safe because of the speed of traffic and because of the priority of motor vehicle traffic. Our streets simply aren't crossable. Police officers die in greater numbers from car collisions than from gunshot wounds. Our streets are under siege. And so, I've been working at the policy level to change that, and we meet on a monthly basis with the LAPD. As a cyclist, I can assure you, I'm acutely sensitive to the fact that the simple quality of our streets, or I should say, lack of quality streets, contributes to traffic collisions. 60% of all traffic collisions have road conditions as a factor in the collision itself. So, our streets aren't safe for pedestrians. They're not safe for cyclists. They're not safe for those that ride mass transit. Some of the buses on Wilshire actually lose their windshield. People end up falling on buses when they hit the potholes on Wilshire. That's how significant the holes are. And they're certainly not safe for those in motor vehicles. And in fact, it's not even news anymore when someone's injured or killed in a traffic collision, because it's just a common occurrence. Specifically for Hollywood, there are opportunities for us to grab a hold of our plan and to actually, the city's general plan, and to actually add elements that make a particular community a pedestrian-oriented community, which would mean that we would have engineering solutions, not just lowering the speed limit, but bowl balance so that the pedestrians are visible when they get to a crosswalk, head scramble so there's a moment when no cars move and pedestrians have the entire intersection. You see other great cities. You've seen it. You can go to Pasadena. You can go anywhere in Europe, and you'll see something that'll make you think, "Wow, that'd be nice." How about a roundabout, which in some cities is actually also a bioswale and an opportunity for water reclamation, an environmental solution. Was that a?
Warning.
Warning, okay.
You'll get the compassion. By the time we're done, you'll know the compassion.
So, there's lots of things that we could do. In fact, I'm doing them. I'm working on them hard, and it's probably one of the things that I have the most relationships with City Hall and the different departments, from the Bureau of Street Services to the LAPD to Transportation. These are the relationships that I've built up as an activist, someone who's been fighting not just within City Hall, but at the county level, with the metro, with the state of California, and in Sacramento, because I think the people, one of their most basic rights is the, is the freedom to move safely and free of fear. And in fact, I wrote the Cyclists Bill of Rights, and that's actually point number one, something we took all the way to City Council and use as a concept to start the action.
Thank you. The next question, we'll begin with Mr. Box. Many people who work in Hollywood can't afford to live in Hollywood. Additionally, we have a, oh, I'm sorry. I preempted my friend, Gumdrop Lou, who's going to be asking this question, because it's something that he knows something about.
Hello. Hi. My name is Gumdrop Lou. My son is being born April 18th. His name is Denexia. I'm an abnormal person, not what you consider normal. In fact, everything I do is artistic. I came to Hollywood. Early on, I was born with syphilis. They thought I was retarded. I had a lot of problems. But it turned out I was pretty intelligent. I was living on the streets for three years. My mom had died. My brother had overdosed on heroin. My sister was on heroin. I lost pretty much everyone. I had nobody left, my family. So, I sleep in a cardboard box with rags and towels and a dog and a earache and a cough and a cold and a prayer, just me, God, the lights, and the stars, day after day, for like three years. I started thinking about stuff, and one day I said, "You know, I want something. I'm hungry. I desire what people have that I don't." Currently, what I'm doing is...
Question.
I'm...
Yeah, get, let's...
Right to the question.
Why don't you get to the question?
Just so you know who I am. Sorry. All right, there you go.
He's a really interesting guy. He shows up to all my...
Yeah. Okay. I would throw "how" and "home" in this question. Many people who work in Hollywood cannot afford to live in Hollywood. Additionally, we have a serious homelessness problem. United Way and Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce recently released a five-year plan to end chronic veteran homelessness in Los Angeles. If elected, how would you, two gentlemen, three, address the need for more affordable housing in Hollywood and support efforts like the United Way Home for Good?
Thank you.
Welcome.
Start with Mr. Box.
Well, let's talk about homelessness. Forty percent of our worst cities in crisis, budget crisis, and one of the biggest expenses we have is public safety, the police and fire department. Forty percent of our Hollywood Fire Department is spent addressing and offering primary medical care to the homeless population in Hollywood. Of our homeless population, 25% of them are veterans. So, we're all in favor of peace, and I can't think of anybody that says, "Don't bring them home." So, while we want to bring our soldiers home, the fact remains, we don't connect them well with services, and statistically, they're going to go three places, Miami, Phoenix, and Los Angeles. And statistically, a lot of them are going to end up on the street. And we don't do a good job of connecting people with the services. And that goes with resources for the homeless. That goes for the services that are needed by those that are in crisis, and that goes for good housing where the jobs are. We have a knack for building housing in one area and creating a transit problem because the jobs are in another. So, for example, Susan, I think it was five years ago, when the Gower Transitional Housing Project came before the Hollywood United Neighborhood Council, my goodness, we thought it was a great solution, but the drama churned when people tried to create a facility that actually provides services. So, it was a lot of drama, and it was a demonstration of, we have a long way to go before we actually start connecting people with services. I speak as someone who has some experience. Before I came back to L.A., I was a Habitat for Humanities Director for the state of Kentucky, and I was also part of workforce development for the state of Kentucky and a Carnegie literacy instructor, as we address, how do you give people the skills they need, the services they need, in order to participate in a robust economy and connect with housing? And quite simply, it's connecting the funding that we fail to execute on with the problems that we fail to acknowledge, because one of the simplest things you can do to get ignored in Hollywood is be in need, and you will be ignored, except by those that are sitting around me, of course. And that's how a lot of us have met, is in addressing some of these situations. And so, I'm surrounded by people who I consider to be great partners in greatness, but we have a long way to go as a city in connecting people with solutions.
Thank you. Mr. O'Grady, homelessness and housing.
Well, I'll tell you how not too soft homelessness. The incumbent, Tom LaBange, a couple of years ago, was one of the people who voted for the LAPD to reduce homelessness by criminalizing downtown. And yes, for a small period of time, L.A. had a smaller homeless population because they were in jail. Okay? The notion that if you don't have a home, that you're a criminal is just, it's, I don't know, it's beyond belief to me. Okay? I'm not even that liberal. It's beyond belief to me. Another favorite institution of Tom LaBange is the CRA. We had a debate last week, and were we polite enough to count tonight? We could debate him again. He said, he said, "Hollywood has come back." That's what he said. Who has Hollywood come back for? So, they demolished all these affordable places that people were living in, and they built beautiful luxury high-rises. It's new housing, of course, but nobody can afford to live in. In North Atwater today, they declare Atwater to be buy-in because it doesn't look pretty enough. There are people living there. Where do you think they're going to go if the CRA is going to come in? They're going to come in, they're going eminent domain, they're going to knock it down, they're going to build something beautiful for rich people. This city is not serious about diverting its assets and its wealth to the folks who need it the most. That's why I'm the only candidate in this race that's committed to cutting my salary in half, not as a campaign stunt, but somebody has got to lead by example somewhere. It is utterly criminal, if you ask me, to sit in an office in City Hall and make almost a quarter of a million per year when blocks from City Hall, you have homeless people. I don't understand how you can sleep at night acting like that. By me going into City Council, I want to bring back a conscience into this thing, and the way to do it is by leading by example. Sacrifice yourself, number one, and encourage others then to step up so as to divert money and resources to this major problem. Thank you.
Our next question, we'll begin with Mr. O'Grady. According to a Nielsen 2010 report, in our zip code here, 90028, only 59% of residents aged 16 and above are currently employed. As a city council member, how would you work to stimulate the local economy and foster new jobs?
Well, number one is public education, and I have a track record here. I went into King Middle School. I went in to be principal, Dr. Murphy, not because I knew anything about education, but I thought they could do with the help.
of residents aged sixteen and above are currently employed. As a City Council member, how would you work to stimulate the local economy and foster new jobs?
Well, number one is public education, and I have a track record here. I went into King Middle School, I went in to be principal, Dr. Murphy, not because I knew anything about education, but I thought they could do with the help. I said, what would you like me to do? She said, you know what, we would love a garden, so we put in a garden, simple as that, it's just a stupid little garden, okay? And somehow, and I have no explanation for it, teachers gotta sprang in their step and education's getting better in that school. So nobody can get a job unless they're educated. We're in friendship together, you and I, and the success of that school and the education is because we're all involved, rolled up our sleeves, and we're just getting involved. There's no ego, you have to leave your ego at the door, frankly, there are no photographers or press or anything like that, we're just getting the job done. And frankly, we got an award last year because we narrowed the achievement gap between the folks who are doing the best and the folks who are doing the least, I hope I'm using the right term there, sorry. With regards to, so first, we need education, and I mean basic, I'm not talking about third level, I mean coming out of high school with a basic ability to read and write and to be able to comport yourself in a way that would allow you to get a job. With regards to economic activity, my friends around in Rose Serobian, it took them almost a year to open up a restaurant which employs forty-two people in Los Angeles. Why? Not because of the regulations, because they're all good, all the environmental regulations, parking regulations, they all make sense. It was that it was so confusing for them to figure out how to obey those regulations. They should be able to obey those in a few days. It took almost a year because each department wasn't talking to each other, it's completely confusing, and of course, the council office had to get involved because they always have to get involved. We need to take personality out of the City Hall, we need to make it very simple. You wanna open up a restaurant? Here are the fifty-three items that you need to do to open up a restaurant. They're listed here in a fifty-three page booklet. Come back with those fifty-three items and you can open up your restaurant. There are so many entrepreneurial and creative people in this city. The city is stopping them from opening businesses because of this confusion, and it's just its confusion, so that's what I would do. Thank you.
Mr. Box, economy and jobs in Hollywood.
I write for CityWatchLA.com, and the last three articles have been on the economy and how we can create jobs and stimulate, support small businesses. Small businesses produce sixty-five percent of the jobs that have been created in our economy over the last generation. And in fact, last year, small businesses were prevailing while large industry was actually losing jobs. And so yet, in the city of LA, the small business person is actually outgunned, outnumbered, and quite honestly, faces an uphill battle, which even City Hall can't figure out. And in this most recent article that comes out tonight, I wrote about the formation of an organization or a nonprofit such as LA City Works, which would be a one-stop shop that a small business person could go to and get everything they need. We already have a model for this, we do it for the film industry. So if I came to town and wanted to shoot a film called Job, I could make one phone call and get a permit, whether I was a large studio or a student film, and I could pull permits in many of the cities around here, the LAUSD, the Forestry Department, state of California. I could find out what the rules and regulations are if I were employing minors, if I was a chiropractor techniques, certain food, I could find out all of the rules, and I could do it all with one stop, and someone would actually come and monitor the set and help me. But if I just wanted to open a business, of course, it's gonna be an uphill battle. And so the city of LA is not good at this because their opening move right now is to find out what's going on, in fact, they don't know. So I think it's critical that we actually form a one-stop shop such as LA City Works, a proposal that I've made, you can read about it tonight, but it's based on my experience in the city of Los Angeles. So I've operated businesses in LA, and our campaign office in the small business, a friend of ours that we've been working with, who just wants to rent electric community car share to the community, and it's been nothing but an uphill battle. They've sent him to Sacramento, rather than saying, oh my gosh, somebody who wants to open a business and pay taxes on Hollywood Boulevard and revitalize the street by the service. So we don't embrace, we actually create obstacles, we don't remove obstacles, we actually keep telling them anywhere but here. And so that's one way I work to stimulate the local economy, which of course produces jobs for those that need them most.
Is that it? Thank you. Everywhere we go in this congregation and in this community, we've watched members of our community suffer because of the lending practices of large banks and their impact on the economy. So what would your position be on the current responsible banking ordinance being proposed in the Los Angeles City Council?
I think it's a very significant and step, I think it's a first step, I think there's a lot more we can do, but you are very accurately identifying an opportunity for us to protect those that are most vulnerable. And I think that's the essence of good city governance, to protect those that need the most, whether it's streets that are crosswalk and protecting those that are most vulnerable, whether it's the fact that we have people from around the world and many different cultures who fall prey to the complexity of something so simple as trying to survive. And in this particular case, this also applies to small businesses from the prior question. You know, access to capital is what holds sixty percent of our small businesses from moving forward, which means they sit precariously perched on that, I told you they would go out of business, which means that individuals are perched on that precarious, I told you they were a bad credit risk. You see what I mean? It's sort of a self-fulfilling prophecy that individuals, small businesses, families, live in an environment where it's so difficult for us to reach out for help. In other words, it's easy to get lost in a big city of four million people. And I've lived in some very small towns and some very large cities, some larger than Los Angeles and some as small as three thousand people. And the fact of the matter is, sometimes in a small town, people know who you are when you're in crisis. But in a city like Los Angeles, the system sometimes is so overwhelming that we don't even know our neighbors or the fact that they're in crisis. And this is the first step in protecting people. The larger step would be to create a mechanism so that people could actually reach out for help and figure out how to navigate this system. So this is a bit of policy and protection, and I think the next step is, just like we do for the film industry and just like I proposed we do for small businesses, the idea that people could find some way to reach out and say help, because keep in mind, it's also the answer with the homelessness. Like, who do you ask? And a person in crisis has lost the ability to ask for help. I was a lifeguard when I was in college, went to school in San Diego, and they taught us to never wait until someone needs help. So we were instructed to swim out when you saw them start to come up for breath with their hair hanging in their face, because that's a person getting tired. And so we were instructed to swim out and say, hello, how you doing? And sometimes they'd say, you know what, not so good. So if as a city, we were able to provide that kind of delivery of services, not based on crisis, but based on a standard for protecting those that need help, for removing obstacles for those that are most vulnerable, and for making sure that people don't prey on our neighbors, so good step, one of many that needs to happen.
So I agree with Stephen, of course, the banking ordinance is a first step, but it's almost like, is that saying, closing the gate after the horse gets out? I think that's what it was back home. It's back to education again. I teach a sustainability class Tuesdays at King Middle School, and I often ramble away from gardening, and I talk to students about money. And they ask me how I got on the United States, and I tell them my cheesy American dream story about my eighty dollars in my pocket, and they often yawn sometimes because I saved a hundred times, because I'm proud of the story. And I try to tell them the difference between labor and capital, and how in America, you try to labor as fast as you can so you can mass some capital, so you can use that capital to give you some interest, and you want to labor so hard as you get older. So what we're missing, I think, in this city, or I think with a lot of young people in particular, is they don't get how money works, how you save money, how you spend money, how you invest something and then gives you a return over a thirty-year period. So one of the things I talked about is this, libraries and schools working together. This is a perfect place for an after-school program, for middle school students or for high school students. Learn about a mortgage, you know, why does it, why is it a thirty-year mortgage? What is the advantage of buying a house? It's sort of, I'd simplify it down to, you know, I invested in real estate when I was younger, I'm buying a cow, okay? And that cow gives X amount of milk, and I'll pay more for the cow if the cow gives more milk. And that's just missing. I think a lot of people don't even get how money adds up anymore, and I think that's a lot of the reasons why a lot of people got into a lot of trouble. I will be slightly, I'm slightly less sympathetic to some folks, and I don't think it's in this area, but a lot of people did borrow way beyond their means. And by the way, this is my wife Justine right here, and our children are here, but we've always lived frugally, and because I always would worry that we wouldn't have enough money for the future, so we would never spend one-hundred percent of what we met. And I think that a lot of people lost that in the last ten years, and I would hope they get that back, so people don't get into trouble. And thank heavens for us, we're mortgaged for you because we did save our pennies, so thank you.
The youth of Hollywood have told us, as we've talked to them through the years, that they need safe places to go after school. You've talked already a lot about education. A lot of the young people in our city, even in this neighborhood here, are vulnerable to drugs, violence, gangs. And if elected, how would you help to address the needs of our youth, in particular, things that, since you've already talked about education a little bit, we're gonna talk about that again in a minute, after school and in our just community life?
So after-school programs are the cheapest way that you can prevent kids getting into gangs. Libraries are a really cheap way for kids to hang out in school's toast. The incumbent closed the libraries for two days a week. I took action on this, I met with Martine Gomez, who's the head of the library, and a guy called Ryan Romer, who's the head of the Library Alliance Guild. We sat down for a week, we went through the city budget, we located the nine million that would have kept the library open for two days, the two days that are missing. And of course, some of that was staff members in CD4, some of whom are here tonight, and we're paying you guys here tonight. This is the shame. Each, so we identified all these savings, and one of those for the council members to take a cut. The other was for the council staff to cut it from twenty down to ten. It's, so it was nine million, it's almost like nothing for two days a week, and of course, we were, we didn't receive a response. Back to my thing about sharing assets, LAUSD and the Parks Department need to start talking to each other, they need to be joined at the hip, those keys need to be handed over during the summer to the Parks Department so we can open up all those, those are existing assets that are right there today that are locked in the padlock all through the summer. And this is, this is what the future is gonna be about. There is no more money left because our politicians have botched it up, it's all gone, okay? So what we need to do is use our existing assets, share them, and so the kids have a safe place to go in the after-school. Finally, the thing that I'm trying to create now, and I'm not going as fast as I want to, is the youth club. I grew up in the youth club in West Marlon, so we had, used to go on Friday nights, we 'd play ping pong, but we'd listen to some disco music. And so Dr. Murphy thinks it's a great idea, we'd use the gym at King, so that my daughter would have a place to go on Friday nights. She's now twelve, soon she's gonna wanna go out on her own. I want her to go locally, play some ping pong, I'm sure she's gonna have a boyfriend pretty soon, and God forbid. And so, yeah, give them a place to be and give them things to do, and they're not gonna get into trouble, so that's it, thank you.
Distracting me for most, my daughter's ten, and I can't wait to imagine that. Youth issues here in Hollywood.
The answers to many of these questions are connected, as are the issues themselves. And so when we talk about safe streets, we're already starting to answer this particular question also, our streets aren't safe for kids because we haven't made them safe for ourselves. And in fact, letting your kids walk to school or ride their bikes to school is, you know, a very, it's a sign of neglect now for your children. And in fact, the worst traffic in our neighborhood is around Marshall High School, is every parent drops their kid off and their cars are stacked three-deep. And all of this brings us back to parks, streets that are safe, streets that are filled with people, streets that are filled with us making them safer. And the fact of the matter is, it's kind of a strange thing to see a pedestrian in this neighborhood, it's so strange that we all look and say, what's up? There's a pedestrian here, that's strange, he must be up to something! But that also goes for kids. I work on safer routes to school funding, and in some neighborhoods, it's not the speed of traffic that interferes with kids' ability to get to school. They actually don't go to school when there's a flare-up of gang activity. And so we had to find solutions on how we could get them to school safely without having them work, walk through certain neighborhoods. So what we're dealing with here is the lack of parks, the lack of eyes on the street, the lack of human beings participating in a vibrant street life, the fact that we actually have development that takes place that creates more fortress-style buildings where people conduct their lives inside as opposed to connecting with other people. There are so many solutions to this problem, including, why isn't it Head Start takes place in the strip mall, the libraries open up a little bit later, the kids go to school? In other words, so many opportunities to connect are passed up simply because we don't partner in greatness. And one of the things I love about this particular church, and it's the first time I've ever sat in this seat, and I'm quite honored, but it's not the first time we've been here, we've been here with so many different organizations, because this church, for example, is a great partner where people feel safe, comfortable and always welcome. So our LA Bike Working Group met here, the Eastwood Coalition met here, that was years ago, Hollywood United Neighborhood Council meets here. In other words, so many people feel like this is a great place to meet and to connect, and I think that we don't encourage that enough in the city of LA and look for ways to work together. And in fact, when I was working on neighborhood council elections, four times in one year we got locked out. We're part of the city of LA and we got locked out. So the city of LA doesn't do a good job itself of forging relationships, which does set a bad example for us, to look for small opportunities to forge relationships, all of which brings us to, the simplest thing we can do is make our streets safer, make sure our parks are open and that we have lots of them, make sure our libraries are open. So I agree with Tomas, that sometimes it's the simplest things, the assets that we have, including our friendships, relationships, and opportunities to make all of the assets that are part of a great city open all the time, and that we participate to make sure that our streets are populated with people, keep an eye on the streets, and that's when we'll have safe streets and a good for kids.
One more kid-oriented question, and this will be a little bit of a challenge for you, because you've already talked about education so much, you have to think of something new to say about education. Education reform has been called the new civil rights issue. I guess a lot of people wanna claim that, so there's a lot of new civil rights issues, but it's one of them. LAUSD, of course, has no shortage of problems and is governed by an organization that is not directly under City Council control. So how do you use your influence as a City Council member, if you were elected, to improve the quality of education for our community?
Well, I do believe that education is a civil right, and in fact, I think that Bill Cosby was pushing that message hard, and I do think that that's, it's reasonable for us to reevaluate some of the essential things that we need to grab a hold of, and I think that's probably the most significant one on the horizon for us. The city of LA is famous for saying, I'm sorry, that's not our jurisdiction, and that goes for literally anything you want, anything, and education is one of the classics, and they're absolutely wrong. City Hall is absolutely wrong when they say it's not our responsibility, it's not our jurisdiction. They're our children, they're our neighbors, it's our community, they're our schools, and it's our opportunity to forge relationships, not look for other people to be responsible for something else. The school board, it has been said, is in charge of instruction, not instruction, and I think that our priorities are flipped. If you think about it, the LAUSD is the largest developer in the city of LA, yet, when they built the new school, the one downtown? By the freeway?
The Curly Q1, number something.
Yeah, the arts school? No, no, the one downtown. The one downtown, we couldn't qualify them for safer routes to school because they were non-ADA compliant. The school said, well, we teach the kids, you gotta get them here. And the city of LA said, well, we don't qualify for funding because you're not even ADA compliant. So we can't qualify for safer routes to school money to get the kids safely there. In other words, you have in the city of LA so many opportunities for a diplomat to rise to the occasion and say, I think we can do better, I think we can work together, I think we can share assets rather than compete for assets. That's not happening, but I assure you, I'm working on relationships with LAUSD, with the Metro, with Caltrains, with federal and state funding, looking for opportunities to forge relationships so that we can partner in greatness with the LAUSD. And in fact, the CRA, if it were abolished, would result in three hundred and twenty-nine dollars per child coming to LA County, and yet the City Council has fought to defend the CRA and to hide nine hundred and thirty million dollars. That three hundred and twenty-nine dollars per child would put two hundred and twenty million dollars into LAUSD right now, while we're considering pink slips and laying off teachers. pink slips and laying off teachers. All of which brings us to this, our current City Council is at odds with the LAUSD, and that must stop. And I can promise you, I will absolutely do everything I can to forge a relationship with the LAUSD and make them partners in greatness.
So, I'm already doing this stuff. Rule number one is Woody Allen used to say, "You got to show up." Our current City Councilman sends his children to private schools. Why? Because he can afford it. We pay him so much, okay? So much money, that he sends his kids to private schools. My children go to public school. I consider it an honor to go to public school, and I particularly consider it a public servant. It is incumbent upon you to send your children to public school, so that you have a self-interest in bringing public schools up. Because you better believe, if I'm in City Council and my daughter's in a school, I will not tolerate anything but the best for my daughter, and thus, I'll be bringing up all of the rest of the school with it. My daughter's at King, I won't tolerate anything but the best for my daughter. Sometimes they're working, cleaning the bathrooms, advocating, sometimes I'm even yelling, because I'm frustrated. But I'm not just bringing up my own daughter's education, I'm helping everyone in that school. I'm designing a new garden for a special needs program at Roosevelt High. Just about being innovative, I left a message for both campaigns, Martinez and Weezer today, see who wants to give us the nine grand first. So I pitched one against the other, I don't care, I want to get the garden built. So few pennies could fix so much in the LUSD system. We're doing it at Franklin. There's no egos involved, we're just in there, we're getting it done. We're doing it at King. Politicians use schools as photo ops, that's what they do. I planted an orchard at King Middle School about three weeks ago. I got there early in the morning, I hauled all the trees, I dug all the holes, we got all the thing done, I had to wait, because Tom LaBange came with his entourage, okay? This is not a joke, this is actually, it's pretty insulting, actually. He came with his entourage. I had to dig the hole, I had to wait for Hank, so he could plant the tree and give us a little speech, and use those kids, because kids are not even at school. So, you know what? You know, Stephen, you are completely right. We need to engage with public schools, but we need to be there, we need to have a self-interest. And that's what I've been doing, and that's what I will continue to do. Thank you.
If you were to survey this community, traffic is a perpetual complaint, not just here, but throughout Los Angeles. But beyond being annoying and contributes to air pollution, fragments, families as people spend hours on the road, what would you do to mitigate the traffic flow problems in this area? Specifically, a member of our community wrote in with this question to our email address in preparation for this event, about the potential widening of Forest Lawn Drive, which goes through Griffith Park. Are solutions like this the right approach to addressing the traffic concerns in our community? And if not, what can be done?
Well, widening Forest Lawn Drive is not the solution at all, and frankly, building more roads is not the solution at all. The 30-10 plan, we need to get it done, we need to get it done quickly. One of the issues right now, society has so little trust in government, in government even spending its money wisely to build. And the 30, the design for the new mass transit and all the various projects, it is a good plan, it's nicely put together. The problem is, nobody wants to pay for it. Why don't they want to pay for it? Because they know or trust that our government are going to spend that money wisely. Laura Chick, who was my hero, she said recently, and they criticized her, "What the hell is the difference? It's 20 grand out of a $28 billion budget." She said, "The moment a taxpayer hears about that 20,000 being wasted, you've lost that taxpayer, next time you go back and ask them to vote for a bond or a parcel tax." I voted against the last LUSD parcel tax, because I was not convinced at that time that LUSD were going to spend my money wisely. So, number one, we need mass transit, it needs to be a massive project, we need to do it in the next 10 years. But in order to get voters to allow us to do it, we need to build trust and convince them again that we're spending their money wisely. And that is my job number one, rebuild the trust between government and voters. And I guarantee you, voters...